For us, we have the Board of Health, Health, Public Health Nurse, Rubbish Collection and Disposal, Council on Aging, Library, Veterans, and the Mayor's Budget. To begin, we'll start with the Board of Health. Mr. Currie, thank you for joining us this evening. Councillors, we'll begin on page thirty-three. As we've done in previous evenings, we'll just read the subtotal for each category. We'll begin with Board of Health, Personal Services, subtotal four hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Councillors with questions? All right, seeing none, move to Health Expense, subtotal of sixty-one thousand, four thirty-six. Councillors with questions? Seeing none, we'll move to Board of Health, Housing, Personal Services, move beyond Move to Board of Health, Public Health Nurse, Personal Services, sub totaling one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven nineteen. Counselor Green.
The Public Health Nurse Fund, do we, how many public nurses do we have? Do we have a nurse in each school? Or how many health nurses are we dealing with?
In my office, there is currently one Public Health Nurse that covers the city. Through the regionalization grant that I received in two thousand and twelve, we do have a regional Public Health Nurse. That individual works five to ten hours per week, totally covered by the, it's a revolving fund, totally covered by that. So it's no city funds. In the budget, there is also a school nurse. Because the Pittsburgh Public Schools cover some parochial schools, the school, I believe it's two nurses, actually cover some of the parochial schools and it cannot be in the school budget. So it falls under the Health Budget because of, it's not part of the public schools.
Okay, so the school nurse does Pittsburgh Public School as well as
Parochial.
The parochial schools?
Yes.
And that's just one nurse?
I believe it's two. It, there's been some turnover there. I believe there's two nurses covering. So portions of their salary, whenever there's, is my understanding, whenever they're spent time at non-public school functions, they are, they charge this grant. That may have changed, may change, it does on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
Councillors with further questions? Seeing none, we'll move to Public Health Nurse Expense, subtotal one thousand dollars. Questions? Seeing none, we'll move to Board of Health, Rubbish Collection and Disposal, for a total of one million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Counselor Beazall.
Thank you. Mr. Currie, last year, we talked about the rubbish removal and so this, two million dollars that, what does it come out to when we have, between the, what we collect and what we're actually spending? What is the net on it, do you know?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay, so it's a two million dollar expense now?
Correct. The two million dollar expense is contract fees, collection, what it costs to pick it up at curb side, and then disposal, what it costs to dispose of it.
I think last year, when you gave a presentation, you were actually talking about that we actually charge other communities to bring their trash and is that?
You're referring to the revenue?
Yes.
The revenue for the landfill currently is at, it's, a little, almost two point one million.
Okay. And the reason why I'm saying that is because I know the last time I had spoken to you about this, I had said, "We're fortunate right now that it's kind of like a wash." But my concern came from when the landfill fills up, if we have to go someplace else, it's going to cost us an additional two million dollars a year
It could.
to put our trash somewhere. Are we currently still looking at other alternatives to stretch that out?
We are. We are actually working with landfill folks on ideas, on potential expansion. We've had a little, I've had a little difficulty in the last several months getting the Westminster folks to join in, but I think we've solved that problem and they will be joining in in a meeting in June. So hopefully, we'll carry on a little bit more involved with those conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Any further, Counselor Caddy?
Is it possible to try to get recycling every week during the Christmas season? Is it too difficult? I mean, you're already under contract, but is it too difficult to do that? Just because during the Christmas season, it seems like everybody has more recyclables than the bucket will take. And it would just seem appropriate if we could get at least two weeks of, or three weeks of collection instead of skipping a week?
The contract does allow for additional collections. We could expand to weekly. It doesn't identify on just a seasonal thing. That's something we could ask for, but that would be above and beyond this, these funds, provided, but yes, that is possible to answer your question.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
Any other Councillors with questions? Counselor Gina Tally?
Mr. Currie, Contract Services Disposal, says projected spend four hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighteen. We've spent through mid-May, three thousand, two hundred, three hundred and two thousand. What's that projection based on?
Just let me remind you, Counselor, that is only up to the end of March. So we still have three more months. Billing for the landfill is forty-five days behind, sometimes more when it shows up in the status C. I'm projecting about a twelve, about twelve thousand dollars left over in that account at present.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Currie? All right, seeing none, that will conclude it for you. Thank you, Mr. Currie.
Thank you, folks.
Next, we'll move on to Council on Aging, page thirty-nine. Will you be able to speak to these items? Counselor, any objections if we move out of order and move on to Library this time? Ms. Bernard, move on to the Library. Hopefully make it a shorter evening for you.
Page number forty-one.
Page number forty-one. Beginning with Library, Personal Services, we have a subtotal of four hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Councillors with questions? Counselor Green?
Hi there. My question has to do with the professional line item. Is that staff or is that services? What does that line cover?
That is the librarians, those that have a master's in library science degree.
All right. And how many of those do we currently employ?
Four and two part-timers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Boishman?
What's the pre-professional?
Those are library assistants who have college education, so they're closer, they're not just a clerk, they're a little bit more.
Okay. How many we have?
Oh, many, well, not many, because we don't have many staff. Six, seven? No, oh, the pre-professional, five, sorry.
Five.
And most of them are part-time.
Part-time.
Any further questions, Counselor Boishman? Any further questions for Personal Services? We'll move on to Library Office, subtotal five hundred dollars. Counselor Green?
Did we, just trying to figure out how you eliminate telephone and office supplies?
The telephone is now part of the city's telephone, so we don't pay a separate fee for that.
Okay.
And then office supplies, we use our revolving funds to cover that.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move on to Library Supplies, a subtotal of eighty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Counselor Gina Tally?
Books and material adult, it says projected to spend in FY sixteen, forty-two thousand. We've spent forty-nine thou, forty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-three, so we're already over that projection?
Yes.
What's the reason for that being over?
Because we knew there was, there was money left over from heating and fuel, so I could use that money instead of using revolving fund
Okay.
to add it a little bit.
What were you able to do with that extra money? What were you able to procure with?
Probably mostly books on CD
Okay.
because those are expensive.
Thank you.
Any further questions regarding Library Supplies? Seeing none, we will move to Library Maintenance, with a subtotal of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, and seventy-one dollars. Counselor Gina Tally?
This may be a question for the Mayor, but why is building maintenance being reduced for the library? Doesn't the library have a lot of problems?
We have some.
Not to say that two thousand's going to do anything, but I just find it a little concerning that we're cutting the library's maintenance budget.
It was a place where we could, because we do have the revolving funds that we can substitute with if we needed to.
Do you know how much is in this revolving fund?
We have about twenty thousand right now.
Does that usually get replenished every year?
Yeah, about twenty.
Okay. My concern is the reliance on revolving funds.
I don't, I try not to budget or think about the money that we will get. I talk, think about the money we have.
Okay.
So I'm looking at what we've collected this year as going towards next year.
So you're supplementing that with revolving funds? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bernard, I'd spoken to you offline before about the air conditioning and heating systems. Can you talk about the state of those repairs and how much existing work is needed beyond this year?
We're still out to bid for somebody to replace a group of the unit events. They're the same units like they had at City Hall, heating and cooling. And we're just waiting for bids to come in on those, and hopefully, somebody will.
Do we expect that those funds will be encumbered for this year's fiscal?
Those are, yes, they're part of the loan that was done for the library roof.
Sure.
And so it included the roof plus this.
Okay.
And we had to wait for the roof to be done and then went out to bid, so there's about seventy thousand in that account.
Okay. And you would expect that'll conclude the vast majority of the major renovations necessary?
At this point.
Great.
I mean, at the moment.
Understood. Yeah, thank you. Counselor Boishman?
Electricity. What are we doing to try to save? Have you put in LED lights in?
We've put in some. We haven't done too much at this point. We, actually, the figure here is going to be less because of the, I assume because the energy less this year. We're going to have spent about forty-two thousand, maybe forty-five. So there will be money left over in that account this year.
Oh, so we're only going to spend about forty-two thousand this year?
Yeah, maybe forty-two to forty-five, depending what the last two months are. So we've done a few LEDs. The turnaround on that is, the payback is about ten years. So we don't want to spend a whole lot on it, not knowing what we're doing with a renovation project of some sort in the future. So we don't want to put a lot of money into it and then be changing it again. So we're trying to do the lights that we leave on overnight.
All right.
Counselor Green?
I would propose that we make a six thousand dollar cut to the electricity line item.
Any further questions from Councillors? Counselor Gina Tally?
Do we, do we know with certainty that, are the savings tied to these LEDs or is it, I've seen a pattern in other accounts in the city, electricity accounts, where the costs this year have ended up coming in a lot less than what was budgeted. Not just the library, other areas. So I don't know if our rates are lower this year or something. Something's going on with the electricity rates.
I think it's the fuel rates are so much less. I mean, I know mine is at home, and that's what they've said it is.
But this is just electricity, not the fuel?
Right. But the fuel that, that's part of the bill.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, well, not, not fuel as in heating fuel, but
Okay.
the fuel part of the electric bill, of what they have to pay to make.
My concern is with reducing this is every year, going back to two thousand and nine, the library has spent pretty, pretty up close to what they were budgeted, give or take a few thousand. So for me, I was, I understand where Counselor Green's going with this, but for me, I think more, more data is needed before we can make a, I know it's a recommendation. I won't support it because I don't believe there's enough data to support a cut of that size unless we get, for example, you said forty-two to forty-five K this year you're going to spend, that's about six thousand under budget. I would like to see FY seventeen come in at that same number, maybe even FY eighteen before, then I would be comfortable reducing it. I would hope that it wouldn't even get to the point where the council would have to reduce something like that. I would hope that the Mayor and the finance team would know that ahead of time and they'd reduce it anyway because, and reallocate it to somewhere else in your budget. So I wouldn't support a cut at this time. The data is, there's not enough data to support it. It's only one year. I think we should let it go another year or two before we see if that's, that's an outlier or that's a recurring underrun in that account before I feel comfortable making that decision. Thank you.
I know for a couple of years, when the planning and the people that moved into our basement moved in, I was keeping track of kilowatt hours versus previous years, and they really weren't taking it to them. So they didn't change what we paid much, but they also didn't change over the years. So we're doing the same amount. It's just how much is electricity costing?
I can only think that this is just, this is just the market rate that's favorable for us this year. Whatever's favorable in electricity rates could go the complete opposite direction the next year. So that's, that's why I feel that way. Thank you.
I'll agree with you, Counselor Gina Tally. I think the, we know unitile rate increases before the DPU at the state level, and we can only anticipate that those, those rate increases are likely to go through at some point. Those that were proposed and went through public hearings at the end of last year. So I'd anticipate rates are going to go up. This looks like an outlier year where your rates are low, it's probably tied to a unseasonably mild winter, I'm sure, in some sense. So I'd be hesitant to cut it and then have to have you come back for us for, you know, six thousand dollars. So I don't think I'd be supporting a cut to the electricity budget this year. Any further questions regarding Library Maintenance? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Bernard.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we'll move to Veterans, page thirty-eight. Good evening.
Good evening.
First, we have Veterans, Personal Services, subtotal eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Questions regarding the Personal Services subtotal? Seeing none, we'll move to Veterans Expense, subtotal two thousand, one hundred and twenty Seeing no questions, we'll move to Veterans Benefits, Health Fund, subtotal five hundred and ninety-four thousand, five seventy-six. Counselor Gina Tally?
Thank you. This is one of those accounts, Veterans Health Fund cash. This is one of those accounts like snow and ice, police and fire overtime, net school spending. This account is always guaranteed free cash appropriations. And it's always guaranteed free cash appropriations because Ms. Marino, like Chief Roy and Chief Martino, have come before us and have told us before the budget's even passed, this is not sufficient. And I am pleased to see that the account is funded at five seventy-five practically. I mean, it's, the, the previous Mayor budgeted five hundred thousand last year. We're actually projected to spend maybe a little over six hundred thousand. So the five seventy-five might be a little light, but I only see possibly a thirty K request for free cash next year, possibly, if you run what you're doing this year. Looks like you may come right at budget in FY sixteen, but I'm showing you might be over maybe about fifteen thousand, but give or take. The bottom line is, is that in FY fourteen, FY thirteen, four hundred K was budgeted and we spent over six hundred thousand. In FY fourteen, four hundred and fifty K was budgeted, we ended up spending five hundred and eighty thousand. And those budget amounts were at the budget time. So the Mayor at that time knowingly underfunded these accounts as a backdoor way to fund free cash with it. So I am happy to see that this administration is getting more in line with the averages to the point where I think, Ms. Marino, you have funding available for next year that if you were to come before us for an appropriation, it probably may be in late May or early June if you even had to.
It would be minimal.
So, yeah, it would be minimal. It wouldn't be fifty, hundred thousand dollars. It was one year we had to add a hundred and fifty thousand. It's just, it's ridiculous. So this account has always been knowingly underfunded, and I'm glad to see that that's not the case here, as in the other accounts we've seen. So whatever more we put in here, the less we have to worry about next September. So I, I, I'm encouraged to see this. Thank you.
Any further questions for Veterans Benefits Health Fund? Seeing none, that will conclude Veterans. Thank you very much. Next, we have the Mayor's Budget, that's page nine. Mayor, Personal Services, good evening, Mayor. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Personal Services, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-six. Questions for the Mayor? Seeing none, we'll move to Mayor Expense, subtotal of four thousand, eight hundred. Seeing no questions, leave that, did that conclude it? Yes, that will conclude the Mayor's Budget. And I apologize.
If you don't mind?
Sure.
Can I ask the Mayor, this assistant to the Mayor, we're going to give him a four thousand dollar raise in one year? Am I reading that right? Fifty-four to fifty-eight?
It's by, Counselor, it's by the matrix.
By the what?
The matrix, the payment salaries.
Okay. All right. All right.
Any further questions from Councillors? Seeing none, we'll conclude the Mayor's Budget and move back to Council on Aging, page thirty-nine. Ms. Goodwin, thanks for joining us tonight. Council on Aging, Personal Services, subtotal one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five seventy-eight. Counselor Green?
John, can you, this is the grant for Almost thirty-six thousand dollars, what that covers and where that comes from?
That's the Formula Grant that we receive from the state of Massachusetts. So that offsets the Personal Services account. All cities and towns receive that grant per the amount of number of seniors they have. This year, the figure is eight dollars a person. So that's where that comes from.
And are, are the seniors that you are servicing, have you seen those numbers beyond the increase or the decrease?
We've had about a hundred and fifty-seven new registrations at the Senior Center this year.
That's great. Love hearing that. Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Gina Tally?
Ms. Goodwin, is there? I think I asked this last year. I know the Senior Center operates on four days a week. Is there, is, how much would it cost extra for a fifth day?
I don't have those figures with me, but obviously, it would be an increase in Personal Services. The figures, I don't, the May report that came out mid-May, those are the figures we have for this fiscal year, so there would certainly be an increase in Personal Services. This year, we did very well with electricity and with heating fuel due to the winter that we had. Depending on the winter, there would certainly be an increase with that.
So are you closed on?
We're closed on Monday.
On Monday.
I would say three times a month, we offer after-hour programming.
So I, I, I'm trying to remember back in oh-nine when we, when we voted to reduce the Senior Center hours to four days. I'm trying to remember what the savings was. I want to say it was between twenty and thirty thousand. I don't know, does that ring a bell? Would that be around the ballpark, what it would be, extra?
That could, that could be, as far as with the staffing and the expenses.
Are you in favor of going back to five days?
We could go back to five days. I feel as though since two thousand and nine, what I have done to offset that, that fifth day was have the after-hour programming, which has really worked well at the Senior Center.
Would you be opposed to five days?
I would not be opposed to five days. What I am striving to do is have that after-hour programming because what I'm doing is I'm attracting a younger senior
Okay.
who's not able to come to programming during the day, but who's able to come to programming. For instance, in June, we have two programs coming up, one on Alzheimer's disease and one on brain wellness. So it's that younger senior that I'm finding that is coming.
So if you go to five days, would the after-programming, after-hour programming not happen?
We could continue it.
Okay.
It would probably cost more money as far as staffing.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, I'm not
No, I agree with you.
I just, I think, I think, I said it before, I'll say it again.
Yes.
I think you were nickel and dime to be, for twenty-five thousand dollars because the previous administration didn't have the gumption to actually look at the budget and find cuts elsewhere. So, you know, they hosed you for twenty-five thousand. There are accounts all over this budget, or not this one per se, but previous ones that you could have found twenty-five thousand by closing your eyes and pointing at the document and finding it right there. So I've always asked that question, and I'll continue to ask it, not in the guise of trying to spend more money, but to provide additional services to the, how many seniors do you guys service a year?
Probably three thousand
Okay.
individual seniors.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions regarding the Council on Aging, Personal Services line?
I do have one.
Ms. Goodwin.
We do have a compressor account with about over eleven thousand dollars remaining in it. We did have one compressor replaced last year. We have three on the roof.
Is that regarding building?
Regarding building.
We'll get to that moments early.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
So we have Council on Aging Expense first, subtotal twenty-four thousand, three hundred. Counselor Beazall?
Thank you. Hi, John. So I'm looking at telephone and office supplies, and I know when we looked at the library, the telephone and the office supplies fell under the city, so I don't, I'm trying to figure out why would the libraries but not the Senior Centers? I don't know if that, if that's a question I could ask the Mayor or Dick.
The telephone and office supplies do come under the city portion of the budget?
There is, you pay a separate phone bill for
The, with MART or with your arrangement? This, the phone that, that is, was with the, what, the library is on the phone system.
Mm-hmm.
And it did, you're on our phone system
Yes.
but you have separate phones for Meals on Wheels or?
Yes, we do.
So that's, that's a separate bill.
Okay.
Plus, our maintenance man has
Right, so you have separate
Right.
phones besides the regular Centrix, our phone system.
Okay, thank you.
Question for you, John, regarding the building grounds and repairs.
Yes.
I know we've had a series of issues with the roof leaking. Can you give me an update on where we stand with those particular items? And will that fourteen thousand cover the full extent of some of the outstanding repairs that may need to be done?
Actually, the roof repair has been completed.
Yep.
And we're at a point right now where we're looking to have the walls of the armory and the big hall painted, thanks to the generous donation of the Friends of the Pittsburgh Senior Center. So the, the roof is repaired, some of the back roofing that was leaking is also repaired. So we're in good shape. Everything's been tight for the last year, and now, thanks to the Friends, they're generously helping us have the walls in O'Neill Hall scraped and repainted.
On that note, can you give us a sense of how much, I guess this past year and how much over the next year, you anticipate in overall repairs that are done through the generosity of the Friends of the Senior Center?
Well, the Friends, just in the last four or five years, they've been instrumental in our security system, which has been huge at the Senior Center. They've purchased two large freezers for us as we give out meat, bread, and pastry on a weekly basis. They were part of that. Not to mention, they completely rehabbed and updated the two bathrooms in O'Neill Hall, the ladies' room and the men's bathrooms, everything from tile through the generosity of Joel and his business. And this is all from the Friends, so And, and this is all from the Friends, so the Friends of the Fitchburg Senior Center certainly play a huge role in our building. And we're really, I really feel we're in a good shape as far as the building goes.
Well, it's a, you know, I think we're certainly indebted to those who, who generally contribute and, and, and help provide for these, these major repairs. But it would certainly be good to see, you know, some of these expenses, it's tough to have to rely on, you know, on contributions from year to year. It's difficult to budget, it's difficult to project out, you know, building needs and making sure we don't fall behind on a deferred maintenance schedule. It'd be good to see some of these, these needs, certainly that fall under, you know, general parameters of what it is that you need to function, that we, we try to roll these into in annual operating. Please.
The other thing is too, we do have a revolving account, we're, we're very active in the community, but also the hall rentals from the senior center generate funding that go into our revolving account. So we always have that account available if need be.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilor De Natale.
Joan, on the compressor you mentioned.
Yes.
For the repairs. You have three, correct, and one is online?
One has been replaced.
Yep.
There are still two original. I had MPG, who I believe is our new HVAC system, come in. They went up to give us a quote, he did say that we are now running back on two, the second one has stopped working. And there's one left. So we do have the funds to replace that second one. What I'm hoping we can do is replace the last two.
So, so one is in operation, the other two are broken?
One is in operation, the second one is in operation, and the third one is gone.
But the second one needs to be replaced?
The bottom line is, we, we should just replace the two of them and get it over with. So I'm hoping we can use the $11,000 this fiscal year and asking if whatever's left over from our expenses from fiscal year '16, if we could put that towards, you know, just completing this project and getting the third compressor replaced.
It just, I remember last year, because it, I don't know how long this has taken to get done. I think it goes back to 2012? We were told the compressors were broken, and nothing got done. So, and I don't want to hear it's because we don't have the money. So on the FY '14 status C report, and maybe I'm confused here, I see an encumbered amount for the compressor replacement of $20,000. And then in FY '16, I see another encumbered amount. Where's this money being encumbered? Where's it being encumbered?
It's, it's, it's all, it's on the current budget report. There's a balance of 11,000 on the report, compressor replacement, it's underneath the council on aging expenses.
Yep.
So that is the balance forward. And I did talk to the purchasing agent, I think it was today, about the, the notion of using maybe building and grounds or, or, I think there is an original account within your expenses that would cover the other three or $4,000 difference. So I think the lot, the short of it is, I think you have money this year to cover it, to take care of that problem, and hopefully it can go to either get a quote or bid it and, and get them fixed.
So we did, we did get a quote for that one compressor, but they.
So you want to get two.
Right.
So when we first encumbered the funds in FY '14, that encumbrance continues to carry forward?
As long as there's a commitment.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we, we have a commitment.
Yes.
I just haven't seen it get done, that's why I keep asking about it. So let's, let's, here's to FY '17, getting it done. Before, they all break, and then we're going to have to spend triple what they cost. Thank you.
Councilor Green.
Does the, do you have, do you have a liquor license yet?
We don't, we do not, but we're very close.
I just talked to them.
Councilor.
Well, I would, I, okay, I would like to, an answer, an explanation, right, because I know it's, that, you know.
We're very close.
Okay.
I met with the Friends, they had a meeting last week, and I think things are moving forward.
And then I know that in the building and grounds repair, was there talk about getting the carpets replaced?
No, carpets have been replaced.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so roof is done, that back wall's getting done.
Correct.
And then it should be ready to go, ready to be marketed as a hall, function hall that can be rented and.
Right.
Ready for parties.
The full liquor license will be a huge help.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Caddy? No, okay. Any other questions regarding council on aging expenses? Councilor Boishman? Councilor, we haven't jumped over there, I'll, I'll just read that, and I'll, I'll go right to you.
Oh, okay, okay.
Senior center building with a subtotal of $34,000. Councilor Boishman, you have the floor.
Go to electricity. Are we, are we using LED lights in that building?
Yes, we are.
Yeah?
Any further questions, Councilor Boishman?
If we're only open four days a week, and we're getting a bill of $29,000 a year?
I believe this year, we have $9,000 remaining. And obviously, that's due to the, to the winter that we've had. I believe the year before, we were close to using, close to $29,000 in electricity, which was a, quite a bad winter. The other thing is too, certainly we have, you know, we have the veterans' agent upstairs, so we do have people who are there after, after hours, plus we have the hall rentals.
Now, the people that are upstairs, do they pay, I call her room and board?
No, the veterans' agent, of course, doesn't, because, you know, she's part of the city, but the state, the state rep has always paid. Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further questions from Ms. Goodwin regarding senior center building? Seeing none, that will conclude this evening's budget hearing. Before we, before we conclude, I just wanted to, just do a general announcement and congratulate the nearly 700 graduates who, who proceeded at commencement at Fitchburg State University this past Saturday. We had three such interns who have been working for the city this past semester, one of whom is here this evening, Megan Pierce, thank you so much for all of your, your time and effort for the mayor's office. James David, who has worked for Solicitor Pusatieri and. Who I believe will, will be joining your, your law firm shortly. Megan Pierce will be joining State Representative Stephen Hayes' staff moving forward, and Danielle Duzblon, who has worked for myself, and Anna Farrell over this past semester, and will remain on with the city clerk's office over the summer. So thank you, thank you to those three interns, congrats to, to all those who graduated this past Saturday. That said, we have a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, councilors.